Good evening and welcome to the December 6th meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. Let's start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to begin, now that we've called to order, we're going to begin this session by going into executive session. I need to announce that the purpose of this executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, 21A2, is to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, namely Fire Chief Erin Kinney, Finance Director Todd Linmark, and DPW Director Blair Crane. A public meeting would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of this public body, and an open session will reconvene, concluding the executive session.
I move that the Board vote to convene an executive session under MGL Chapter 30A, subsection 21A2, for the purpose of conducting strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct contract negotiation with non-union personnel.
And we have to poll individually. Anita Mecklenburg-I. Oh, second? Second?
Yes, nice catch.
Got it. Anita Mecklenburg-I.
Kevin Calcutta-I.
Excellent. Now we're in executive session.
So we are back from executive session and thank you to everybody who is joining us out there and we'd like to open this next part of our meeting with public comment. So if there's anybody out there with three minutes worth of things to say relating to the town, we'd be happy to hear from you. And so I'm going to move on seeing none. Number two is vote to abate a water bill for 47 Medway Street.
So in the select boards packet, there's a consideration memo from our DPW director. This is a request for a water abatement of $5,251.71. It's for 47 Medway Street. There was an undetected underground service leak at this location. Because of the location of the water meter, it was undetected for several months, resulting in a pretty large exorbitant bill. So what is typically done is they do an average of the typical usage and thus the DPW director is recommending that the board vote to abate the water bill. And that amount.
Well, thank you. I don't have any questions. Do you?
None.
Want me to do it?
I was hoping I could drag out that "none" a little bit longer until I got to the page, but I got it.
Okay.
I move that the board vote to abate a water bill for 47 Medway Street in the amount of $5,251.71.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Number three, please review and execute the warrant for January 11th.
So it seems just yesterday we were at another, a last special town meeting. So the board in your packet, there is the language for the article. The warrant closed yesterday at 6:00 PM. There's only one article and the language...
So we are back from executive session and thank you to everybody who is joining us out there. And we'd like to open this next part of our meeting with public comment. So if there's anybody out there with three minutes worth of things to say relating to the town, we'd be happy to hear from you. And so I'm going to move on seeing none. Number two is vote to abate a water bill for 47 Medway Street.
So in the select board's packet, there's a consideration memo from our DPW director. This is a request for a water abatement of $5,251.71. It's for 47 Medway Street. There was an undetected underground service leak at this location. Because of the location of the water meter, it was undetected for several months, resulting in a pretty large exorbitant bill. So what is typically done is they do an average of the typical usage and thus the DPW director is recommending that the board vote to abate the water bill. And that amount.
Well, thank you. I don't have any questions. Do you?
None.
Want me to do it?
I was hoping I could drag out that none a little bit longer until I got to the page, but I got it.
Okay.
I move that the board vote to abate a water bill for 47 Medway Street in the amount of $5,251.71.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Number three, please review and execute the warrant for January 11th.
So it seems just yesterday we were at another, a last special town meeting. So the board in your packet, there is the language for the article. The warrant closed yesterday at 6:00 PM. There's only one article and the language has been approved by town council. Just an FYI, in case people are interested, there is no figure for the fire station in the warrant article. However, there should be a figure at special town meeting that the fire station building committee will present. The bids are open currently for the fire station as well, with them closing December 15 for sub bids and December 22nd for general bids.
Excellent. I remember them saying that was really important to them to have an accurate number on the warrant. So thank you for that. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure we reiterated the reason why it's on there is not to withhold what the figure is until people get to their room, is to ensure that the figure that's communicated is accurate and backed with viable bids. So that's the reason why.
Yes.
Excellent.
I move that the board execute the warrant for the special town meeting to be held on January 11th, 2023.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Please discuss and consider changing the dates of in-person voting.
So after discussing with our town clerk, Ms. Green, we did notice that when we first gave the dates, we had included Martin Luther King Day. That poses some challenges because of holiday and pay and different things like that. So the town clerk came up with another proposal for dates. And actually, in some manners, it's got the same amount of hours, but it's also a continuous amount of days. The previous suggestion had sort of a Friday and then it was off the weekend back on. This will allow for continued early in-person voting. This is what the town clerk had recommended and I agree with adjusting the dates. So it's for the board to consider changing those dates.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks to Carol for doing that work. I don't have any questions. Do you?
No questions. I move that the town of Norfolk Select Board allow early in-person voting for the special election scheduled on January 28th, 2023, at the dates and times as listed on the agenda.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approving the memorandum of agreement between the schools and the town of Norfolk.
So in the board's packet, there's a memorandum of agreement. This agreement was in place, began in 2019. It was an agreement with the former town administrator and the superintendent on a shared position, the director of facilities. That memorandum agreement expired. Myself and Ingrid, we discussed it. We didn't really change anything substantive. We updated the dates, also included language to allow for the town administrator to participate in the review of the director facilities. Everything else is pretty much outlined in a contract already that the board has already agreed upon. So it's really entering another memorandum of agreement that will last until 2025.
Excellent. Thank you for doing that work. I don't have any questions. Do you?
No questions from me, no. I move that the board vote to approve a memorandum of agreement between the Norfolk School Committee and the town of Norfolk for the director of facilities position for the period of July 1st, 2022 through July 3rd, June 30th, 2025, and authorize the town administrator to execute the document.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote to approve the long-term, long-form license with the Department of Developmental Service, Rentham Developmental Center for access to the Lind Conservation Land.
This item is sort of an annual thing that the select board considers. In 2016, the town executed a license with the state that provides access to the town's conservation land at Lind Farm. But it also crosses a portion of the Rentham Development Center. There's no cost to the town except for the plowing in the winter and naval access to the parking area and some trail maintenance. It hasn't been an issue every year, so we're recommending that we renew that license agreement.
Awesome. I do not have any questions.
I don't have any either. I move that the board approve the renewal of the long-form license with the Department of Developmental Service, Rentham Developmental Center for access to Lind Conservation Land for the period of November 1st, 2022 to October 30th, 2023.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The next one is to accept an act regulating wastewater.
So the town, a town meeting approved the Wastewater Service Act. The legislature, particularly the Senate House, made some revisions to that language, particularly making the select boards or the commission, the authority, also include, including some updates in language. They're primarily grammatical in nature. I did make sure I touched base with town council as well to make sure they approved of these changes. And if the board were to approve these changes, we would forward this along to the House of Representatives to hopefully ratify this and get this enacted.
Awesome. I reviewed the changes. I didn't see anything remarkable. Do you have any questions?
No, I was just checking to see if this was a bill that I had on a docket to discuss with a member of the House of Representatives, and it is. So this looks good to me as well. I move that the board accept all amendments to the legislation entitled "An Act of Further Regulating Wastewater Services in the Town of Norfolk," as set forth in S3113, and to authorize the town administrator to forward a certified copy of this vote for further action by the legislature.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The next thing is to authorize the town administrator to execute a community compact grant.
Thank you. I'm proud to notify the board that the town recently received another community compact grant. This is for IT to upgrade our phone systems, make them E911 compliant. This is a public safety issue for the team here. Also would reduce our annual maintenance costs by getting off the legacy system. So the town is receiving $20,000. Select Board Member Calcut, my IT Director, Mr. Tron, and myself went to the State House this afternoon to be with the Lieutenant Governor and other local officials, and we were proud to take part in that. Over a month, we've received almost $100,000 in grant funding. So thanks to the board's leadership and encouraging us to pursue these grants, and obviously the various departments that have assisted in getting these grants. That's a pretty good haul for a month. And in community compact grants, we've received about $79,000 just alone.
Awesome. And for our abundant viewing audience out there, grants mean we don't have to pay it back. So that's pretty amazing. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, just while I do appreciate throwing support and thanks to the select board, it really, we want to throw it back to you, Justin. Thank you so much for all the work that you've done coming in and hitting the ground running to get these grants in and get us as much as we can in short term. So thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you to department heads. Thank you.
I think we have to.
I move that the board vote to authorize the town administrator to execute the community compact grant for the information technology in the amount of $20,000.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
The next one is to waive the public hearing for renewal of the Class III Auto License for Norfolk Auto Repair.
So as we move into a part of our agenda of licenses and so forth, this is sort of an annual, longtime established tradition of waiving the public hearing for a Class II Auto License for Norfolk Auto Repair. There haven't been any complaints or community concerns about these operations. So typically, the select board has waived that public hearing and they have to take a vote in order to waive that public hearing.
Excellent. I do not have any questions or concerns.
I move that the board waive the Class III hearing for Norfolk Auto Repair.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Number 10, approve of the following licenses expiring at the end of the year for liquor, common victualer, entertainment, Class I, II, and III auto detailers, and taxi.
So this is part of our annual license renewal process. There's about 36 various licenses that renew on January 1st. This is an important function that is a part of the town administrative select board's office. I do want to credit Judith Lozardi in our office, who sort of is the point person on this. She's been taking this about getting all the applications, coordinating with our various departments to make sure that they comply and they meet the requirements necessary. So in your packet, you have spreadsheets sort of indicating that there are no issues based on our various departments, building, et cetera. Majority of these business individuals have complied and given us their relevant documents. The language is crafted in a manner to ensure that if there is anyone hasn't submit their documents, the board will not be approving that license. This gives us leeway in case, you know, it comes in, you know, a time where there isn't a board hearing and ensures that they won't be shut down or anything like that. So we've crafted the language there to protect the town in that sense, and we have no issue. There's nothing to highlight as an issue from any other departments as well.
Excellent. I do not have any questions. Do you?
No, just want to clear my throat for a moment.
We can alternate them if you want to.
That's okay. I'll just kind of trudge through. I move that the board vote to approve and execute all liquor license renewals for 2023 for the businesses listed on the agenda subject to the receipt of all required documentation, inspections, and payment of fees.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye. Want to go for it?
Yep.
Go for it.
I move that the board approve and execute all common victualer license renewals for 2023 for the businesses listed on the agenda subject to the receipt of all required documentation, inspection, and payment of fees.
I just didn't want to say victular. That was the only thing.
It's a hard one. It swallows up in your mouth there.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I move that the board approve and execute all entertainment license renewals for 2023 for the businesses listed on the agenda subject to the receipt of all required documentation, inspections, and payment of fees.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I move that the board approve and execute all Class I, Class II, and Class II, I think that must be Class III.
Class III.
Auto dealer license renewals for 2023 for the businesses listed on the agenda subject to the receipt of all required documentation, inspection, and payment of fees.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I move that the board approve, approve and execute the license renewal for Norfolk Town Taxi for 2023, subject to the receipt of all required documentation, inspections, and payment of fees.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
The next one is please discuss the select board goals and objectives.
Right. So on this screen, we have a copy, a draft copy of the select board's principles, goals, and objectives. This was compiled based on our discussions individually with each of the select board members, trying to understand what the priorities are for the board, to give direction to department heads, myself, and, you know, boards and commissions. This is a draft copy, and I try to utilize some of the objectives and accomplishments of the previous years that may have not been accomplished, as well as implementing some new objectives and accomplishments. So it does look a little bit different than what we've typically done. I'm open for suggestions. These are ultimately the select board's goals. I think it would be a good idea for the board to discuss them. If there's any changes, we can talk about them here, or you can individually send me some changes, and then I can incorporate them into a final document for consideration, maybe the following select board meeting.
Awesome.
Did we ever go, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you go right ahead.
Did we ever go through and identify how we performed against the 2022 goals?
No.
That might be a good first step to identify what we carry over, because a lot of this was just carried over from the work plan that we were previously leveraging, right?
Most of these items, actually. So there was a working draft. I don't know if the board had considered this before. I don't think there was a final review of the fiscal year 22. Anything that wasn't accomplished, that wasn't marked green on that document, I didn't incorporate all of them because I didn't think, we wanted to restructure our goals and objectives. So all of these are not, these are all new objectives. There isn't anything that's overlapped that the board has accomplished based on that document that I saw.
So my just first, at first blush, I really like the way that it's organized in terms of these are our principles, because it really talks about the process of government. And so I really like those process guidances that you have, guidances is probably not a word, but those processes, goals or guidance that you have shared here, I think that's really great. I looked over the goals and objectives, and I feel like they reflect the meat of what we're doing, right? The, I think it really captures very well. The one piece that I feel like I want to capture on here, and I'm not sure where that goes or how that looks, but it seems from my own self, and one of the things I remember when I was first elected, I met with Blythe, and she said, like, what's your agenda? And I said, I don't, I don't have an agenda, other than I really feel like civility and transparency is really important. And I feel like what's happened in our society over the last few years has really raised my personal awareness of systemic racism. And I would like our, I believe with systemic problems, that has to be handled with intention. And so I would like our principles to reflect some level of inclusion, or I think it belongs up in the process page. I was thinking about our conversation, Justin, and I don't know, like it is in, in the administration and finance, it says collaborate with the school department to further partner with that. We could maybe add something in community engagement. I just want it to be out loud, like to be on the table, that we are being intentionally inclusive. I know that I have heard from, from members of town who don't feel, who don't feel that. And so I think that that's something we need to do with intention. I don't have the clean answer about where it fits on here, but overall, I love it. I would just like to capture that intention in our principles, and so that we're doing that work with not, there's a difference between intent and impact, and I think our intent has been really good, and the impact isn't always as positive as we'd like. And so how do we do that? And what guides us in our decisions, like you've included in there? I started working on it like we believe in, and you do say work inclusively, which is what I, we want to include all the members of our community. And so that's my only feedback.
Is there a specific initiative that you think would work towards that? I mean, is there like a training that you would want people to go through, or a course that you can, people to go through, or a book that you think they should read to make it, what I'm trying to do is differentiate an overlying principle versus an actionable goal.
Right. And so I think for me, and all I can reflect on is, is my journey as a person and my work as an educator. And I think for me, the courses that I've taken that helped me identify my own bias and help me understand how I fit in the story, and that's the only way I can change the story, is once I see the story. And then as I, Maya Angelos says, once you know better, then you do better, right? And so the process for me is, it's harder to say, everybody has to read this book and then everything will be better. But I have read a lot of great books, and I have taken courses that have shifted my understanding about things. Like you can say you understand intent versus impact, and I thought I did, and then I read a book, and I'm like, oh, now I understand. Because I didn't, I thought I understood, but, but I didn't really understand. And so that's, it's the problem is that it is, first of all, it's so systemic over, over centuries in our country. So it's not something that's going to be a quick checkbox that is fixed. But I think if we just say it somehow, that we are, we are striving to be intentionally anti-racist, and, and the process isn't perfect, right? Because we're figuring it out, because we've never been this way before. I think that that's really important. I, I encourage my staff to be, to make mistakes in their conversations, because we, if we're trying to be perfect and say the right thing, then we're just going to not say anything, and that's the worst thing we can do. And so I think I'm, there's probably community training that we can participate in. I think that, that we would benefit from that, but I don't know the answer to that. I was going to partner with Jessica Pepel, was that her name? And then she's not there anymore, so.
But we do have somebody new, right?
Yes.
Who I have not met.
Yeah.
But we were going to lean on them for guidance if they had recommendations, because I'm not an expert in this area. I'm just, I'm passionate about it because I want the world to be a better place. I'm passionate about it because I, I just remember reading, and it, like, you know how when you read something and it strikes you hard? I read about women getting the right to vote. And they said, women championed it and fought for it, but in the end, white men had to give women the right to vote. White men had to do that for them because they had the power to do that. And that really struck me about changing racism is my responsibility as, as the person of privilege. And so I don't know the answer to it. I just know that I think it's really important, and I think it's systemic. The more you read about, even our things about secular, secular liquor licenses are informed by, by some, of some of those things. So I believe that it's, it's work that we have to do with intention, but I don't know the answer. I would be happy enough to put it in our principles, that we believe that diversity makes us, makes us stronger. That might be enough to say, we believe diversity makes Norfolk a stronger place, or a more, maybe that's enough. But I believe that to be true, and I believe, I believe that sometimes we have made, even while I'm here, systemic decisions that I don't think are as inclusive as they could have been. And so I would like that to be in our, in our principles.
Okay.
I don't know how it looks, and so I don't have quite the magic answer. But I believe that if we don't have those difficult conversations, and if we don't say this is important to us in Norfolk, no matter that, that our population is 86% white or something, that that's, it's actually more important here. When I worked for the Norfolk Schools, we talked about we had a heightened responsibility to offer a global education, because plays well with white kids is not good resume material, right? That we had to afford our kids opportunities to be global citizens, not just citizens in Norfolk. And because of our homogen, homogen, homogeneous nature.
Homogenous.
Our homogeneous nature. There's a longer word that I'm not getting out of my mouth, so. Homogeneity. Ha!
Got it. Nicely done.
Anyway, so I believe in that, and I believe that that's important work that has to be done with intention, but that it doesn't have, it can't be fixed. Like, it just is a process, and these are process goals. And so. And so it's a process of trying to do better and learning together. So there's my diatribe.
I think I have some guidance on what to do with it. Kevin, is there something, were you thinking more of a goal or objective, or did you think something in principles as well?
Yeah.
Because I have a couple of thoughts on this.
I think this is great. I think highlighting high-level principles that will act as our overarching theme for the way that we approach all these initiatives is fantastic. But I found success, at least in some cases, over the course of the last five years, in setting out definitive markers for things we want to accomplish, something that's tangible that we can say, hey, we accomplished half of this, we accomplished 100% of this, this is going to be something we want to carry forward, whatever the case may be. I want to be able to highlight progress in some way, shape, or form.
Right.
And I think that there's a couple of these where we can. There are measurable attributes to some of these that we can use and say, hey, look at this metric, this identifies that we've accomplished this.
Right.
I just want to make sure that that exists for just about all of them, so that they aren't as ambiguous in that, hey, we want to try to talk about this. You know, I don't think that necessarily is an objective for us.
So you want them to be more like SMART goals?
For the most part.
I tend to agree with that. I was thinking, I was thinking lifting it as more of a goal or objective, because one of the things that I think that I've spoken with Caitlin, and I think with the board overall, is we're going to do a human resources sort of review of our policies and procedures. And we have a robust onboarding experience, right? Maybe that's an opportunity to do training on diversity, equity, inclusion for all new members of our staff. One, they learn that it's a priority for us as a community, as an organization, this is important to us, this is part of your onboarding. So that's a tangible thing that you can measure and say, hey, do we have a policy and procedure in place for that? So I think it's more of a goal objective, and I agree with Kevin, because I think a lot of these, there are, some of these are broad, and how you measure them, you probably have to give a robust, like, update on it. But there are tangible things here to say, hey, did we complete a personnel bylaw? Check, mark it through, and so forth. So I agree it's more of a goal objective. I can wordsmith it, and I will send it individually to the board and maybe give me some feedback there, and then we can talk about it the next meeting as well. But I can come up with an objective, possibly, getting feedback from you both. Also, just as general information, part of that community compact grant that we got was for finance and sort of doing, working with ClearGov to put an interactive budget as well, something that's really important with these goals and objectives, I like to incorporate is the budget process as well, because these principles guide us in where we're going with the budget and so forth, and department heads, et cetera, myself. So that's the vision.
It didn't go unnoticed also that you were able to take the feedback from both Select Board members and tie it into one direct initiative to accommodate both of us. So didn't take you much too long to figure out how to get everybody on the same page, Justin. Thank you.
Thank you. There's anything else?
No, it looks great. I think, I think that is guiding, like, you can say, are we making decisions that meet these criteria? And I think that's fabulous. I think it's a step in the right direction.
Agreed.
Right. So I'll just give some quick town administrative updates. It's going to go out of order real quick. I just want to update the board on the tax rate. Last Select Board meeting, we had to discuss, the board considered the tax rate. The Department of Revenue has certified that, so good work to our assessing team and so forth, our finance team in general about that. So we're all set there. I want to update the board on mail-in voting. Currently, our town clerk, Carol, has sort of put everything on our Facebook page, our town website, in terms of a form for residents. If they're interested in getting a mail-in ballot, they can complete a form to get a mail-in ballot for our special town, our debt exclusion and election that's coming up in January, but also our annual election in May. If the board wants to see something beyond what we're doing, which is essentially putting it on face, we're having maybe a reverse 911 phone call, putting it on our social media, putting it on our website, there's other avenues to explore. Carol sort of thinks the method that we're doing now is proactive. The Fire Station Building Committee took a vote recommending that we do what we're doing already, but if we want to explore postcard, there's monetary expenses to consider there. I just want to give you that update, if there's anything else we want to consider. But Carol is recommending that we go this approach, Fire Station, and it is my recommendation that we do this as well. Okay? Finally, I just want to do an introduction of our new Assistant Town Administrator/HR Director. Kate O'Brien is joining us from Dover. This is a new sort of reclassified position, was formerly just an HR Director. That will be part of the portfolio, but also give us some additional bandwidth in the office to do some other things. So I just wanted to introduce Kate and throw it to her if she wanted to say anything briefly to.
Thank you, Justin. Again, it's still only my second day, but very honored to have this position, a first of its kind in a sense. You know, I'm excited to hit the ground running and start working on all the projects, and there's a lot, which is exciting.
There's a lot.
And yeah, no, staff has been great. Looking forward to meeting everyone this week and more members of the community. So, thank you.
Awesome. Welcome. Welcome. We're very happy to have you.
And as just general information, the board knows this, but also for the public, the process to get here for an Assistant Town Administrator included a panel that included our Select Board Chair, former interim Town Administrator Jeff Nutting, and a school representative, Mrs. Aldonna. So it was a diverse board, and we got some great candidates, but I think we got a fantastic one in Kate, so I'm excited to have her on board.
Excellent. Thank you. And that's it for town administrator updates?
That's it.
Take it away, sir.
Onto the warrants. I move that the board approve six warrants for the period of November 22nd, 2022 through December 2nd, 2022. That's a lot of twos.
That's a lot of twos.
As printed on the agenda for this meeting.
Second, all those in favor say?
Aye.
Minutes.
And the last one is I move that the board approve the meeting minutes of November 15th, 2022, and the revised meeting minutes of October 4th, 2022.
Second. All those in favor?
Before I do that?
Yes.